I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 17th, 2019 Duval City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise for the flag sent by Councilmember Matthew Iyer?
Pardon me. It is the flag of the United States of America and it is your toilet for which you stand as one nation, under our individual and liberty and justice law.
Clerk, would you please take the roll? Oh, actually, no, those first. So we will, we're going to start an office meeting with the oath of office for our newly elected and re-elected councilmembers. So we have Mayor President Mike Reddington, Councilmember Dorothy Lindell, and Councilmember Matthew Iyer. To that order of position, so Councilmember Iyer, heed after me. I am Matthew Iyer.
I am Matthew Iyer.
Having been duly elected to the office of City of Duval Council, position number two.
Having been duly elected to Duval City Council, position number two.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office.
Will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of Washington and of the United States.
The Constitution of Washington and the United States.
Right. Congratulations. Move to your side. Next up, we have Michael Reddington, who's been with us just about all over here now, right? In our current area of pretend, was officially elected to this position for the first time. So you'll go ahead and raise your hand, heed after me. I am Michael Reddington.
I am Michael Reddington.
Having been duly elected to the office of.
Having been duly elected to the office of.
City of Duval Council, position number four.
City of Duval Council, position number four.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Your vicious morning.
Thank you.
One more. Your towel. No, look at that. Grace, right hand, heed after me. I am Dorothy Lindell.
I am Dorothy Lindell.
Having been duly elected to the office of City of Duval Council, position number seven.
Having been duly elected to Duval City Council, position number seven.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America.
All right, moving on, clerk, when you're ready, will you please take the roll? Councilmember Nicky.
Here.
Councilmember Iyer.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Reddington.
Here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Redmond.
Here.
Councilmember Lindell.
You.
We have a form. Thank you. Under additions or corrections to the agenda, under consent, please add claims for December 17th, 2019 in the amount of $203,181.55. And under new business, add item number three, Agenda Bill 19-11, approved reservations suspending policy guidelines for human service grant funding to expend certain dollars for community wellness task force expenses. And just to be clear, this was what we discussed at the last council meeting. We were unable to get the, all of the details of the agenda bill in place before the packet went out. Clerk was able to get that out today. With that, our ready councilmembers would like to see. Councilmember Redmond. Iyer and McCaffrey. All right, thank you. With that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have any comments from the audience this evening? And if so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. You'll have three minutes. We do have time to hear. Dr. Anthony Smith from Riverview School District did sign up. He is first.
Thank you, and thanks for, like I said, the community, the whole last week. Thank you very much for council support and also the mayor showing up along with other city officials to the community wellness task force meetings. That process has been going extraordinarily well, and I appreciate the city's support in supporting our community. What I'm here to talk about today, and it won't take a minute, is just to share the brochure on upcoming Capitol Facilities Bond for the Riverview School District. And I presented the council on this before, so I won't go through all the particulars, but everything's spelled out in this brochure. And if you open it up, mayor, you have all the copies for council members there. If you open it up, it just goes through what the projects are, what it does to tax rates, and in the upper right-hand corner, we set up a specific website. It is bond.rsc407.org for those people that really want to dig into past statistics and things. And on the reverse side is just a historical view of the implementation after a bond has passed in our district from the last several bonds. So 1990, implementation year being 1991, 1997, 2002, 2008, 2021 projected. So I just wanted to share that information with the council, and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Gero Mendez, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gero. I'm living 104506 Northeast, Unit 104, Duval, Washington, like it's your one night. And I'm part of the Duval Chamber of Commerce. I'm part of the board meetings, and I'm going to present it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening?
Seeing none, moving on to scheduled items, mayor's report. Today, I have been asked to consider serving on the executive board of the Sound Cities Association. I was re-elected to the board last Wednesday for another two-year term. New this year, normally it's within the board, they select who they want. This year, they decided to do, as far as our executive board membership, secretary, vice president, treasurer, et cetera. And this year, they decided to do nominations in the evenings. So I had that interview this morning. We'll know probably next week whether I get one of those positions. But if so, it'll mean a lot of good things for the City of Duval Valley, being out in meetings with county executives and other county councilmembers. Don't normally ask meetings, ask many meetings with. Also, today, attended the Sound Cities Mayor's Lunch in place of the Northern Mayors Meeting. So first time ever that all of the mayors that are members of Sound Cities got together for a lunch, and it was really lovely. We talked about a lot of the successes that we've all had in our communities each year, focused on all the positive going on, and it was really great to get together with all of the mayors. In fact, including meeting City of Redmond's mayor-elect, our honor of honor. So he's definitely got big shoes to fill with Dennis Law's retirement, but it's nice to have him as part of the group now as well. Tomorrow, Sound Cities Board meets. We'll be officially ratifying the PICS decision on regional committees. So thank you to all of those that applied. I think we scored on one of them, but I'll wait until after we take the vote tomorrow to officially announce. That might just involve Councilmember McHenry. And so, you know, it's looking pretty good. I think we have more participation from our council than we've had in committees in the past, and that's a huge step forward. And I appreciate everyone stepping up to serve. We also have first annual lunch with all of these supporters of Sound Cities tomorrow, so the board is coming together to meet fellow of those that have sponsored the organization and helped keep it afloat and keep our dues lower over the years. And should be just a nice holiday gathering, so we're looking forward to that. For council certification, I will actually be taking vacation for the first time in a year and a half, other than just weekends. So I will be taking two weeks off. However, my phone will be with me, my computer will be with me, I just won't be at the office physically. So trying to get some quality time in with my kids this winter break. With that, I don't think I have anything else this evening. Actually, I do have one item. Today, sooner than we expected, our finance director and her team were able to interview one of the applicants for the council position. They've got no more interview to go, and then they'll bring forth the recommendation to me. As previously discussed, we did have a candidate that was only interested in the position of full time. However, she was, it sounds like that candidate was offered someone too good to refuse in another jurisdiction, so it is unfortunate that that person is no longer getting on. But our finance director thinks it's a complicated, between the two, we'll get somebody that meets her needs. So with that, that's Anna and I report, and so we'll move on to first to Councilmember Redmond.
So I just wanted to report that I attended the mental health community forum, and it was put on by the Riverview PTSD Council. And that was at toll last week on, I think it was Wednesday. Dr. Smith was there, and he gave a report on what the district's been doing in response to the tragedies, and also gave some great tips for parents. And at that meeting, we broke up into groups to brainstorm some different ideas for the community. The one I attended was a discussion about potentially having a youth center. And at this point, they've identified potentially the shared use with the senior center. So I thought that was very creative. You know, that's used very much in the daytime by the senior center, and in the evenings, maybe it's more free. So I thought that was a creative approach to finding space. The other thing I wanted to mention, Laura Smith, who, I think she's the director of St. Pauli Valley Community Network. She reported on the success of the youth mental health first aid classes, and they've had ninety people go through the class so far. Interestingly, only five have been men, so it's a little disappointing. So I've spoken to my husband about it, and he's planning to attend. And the next class is January 25th, in carnation. And he is going to challenge some of the other sports leagues to try to send some of their coaches. Just the men in our community have a lot of influence, and as coaches especially, to be trained to identify our youth in need is very important. So he's president of Little League, he's going to put out a little friendly competition to see which youth sports organization can get the most men to attend. So anyway, hopefully, Councilmember McHenry, I believe she attended, so hopefully she could tell a little more about that.
Councilmember Iyer and McHenry.
I just wanted to take a second at the end of two and a half years, at the beginning of next four, to thank my fellow councilmembers for their service and their support throughout the last two years, and hopefully we can continue into the next four. And also just like to recognize my parents and gratitude and appreciation of their support for exemplifying simple service throughout their lives and being such a great role model to me, and so thank you.
Councilmember McHenry.
So just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow, we have another council chat. It's going to be held at the Duval Library in the meeting room. And from special request from the community, we made this one a little later in the evening. This is seven to nine p.m. All right, Councilmember Iyer, are you going to be there?
As long as my wife does not go to work.
Okay. That's a fair, that's a, that's a fair, yeah. And then mayor, did you still manage to find that one?
I should be able to.
Okay, and I will be there, so we will be there from seven to nine, but we have to leave exactly like right before nine, because that's when they close. So council chat's just an informal, casual meetup of council members. It's a great way to just have conversations with our community and really talk about anything you want to talk about. Some things may require follow-up, but we'll do our best to get back to on that. And then I did attend the youth mental health, the youth mental health first aid class this last weekend. It was led by Terry Hardy from Friendly Youth. And so this class is not about becoming a counselor or a therapist. It's not about diagnosing or treating a mental illness, but it is about recognizing youth who may need help approaching and assessing them. Reassuring and giving them information, as well as encouraging appropriate professional help, self-help and other support. I can't think of a single person in the community that this would not help. I feel much more confident now that I can help provide support to somebody until they can get that professional help, which is always what you're going toward. With everything that's happened in the community, I think these classes are amazing, and I think they're vital for overall health and strength as a community. And I was in a lucky class. We had three men, which the instructor could not help but comment on, because they do tend to be much more, you know, more female. But I would be excited to see the results of your husband's challenge to the community. So anyways, I would really encourage you all to go if you can. The next one is on January 25th. Initially, they had been really selling out the, you have to get a ticket, but it's free, and who's lunch? So it's a really great thing. So look on St. Pauli Valley Community Network's website, and you'll be able to register for it. And I'm sure they'll probably have more. They've been very popular, so that's what I have.
Thank you. Moving on, do we have any council committee reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to King County Fire Mr. 45 with Chief David Burke.
Evening, American Council. My name is David Burke. I'm a fire chief, and on behalf of the fire district, I appreciate the opportunity to share a few things with you. It has been a busy year, and calls continue, even though they've slowed down a little bit in November and into the first part of December. We are two calls away from our previous record, and so I don't have any doubt at all that we will exceed that number before the end of the year. Several things here, but I just wanted to say to the council and all those people that are responsible, thank you so much for the community events that we do here. I am so pleased to be able to participate and have our crews and our engines and everything, most recently in the tree lighting. Yeah, what a great event that was. It absolutely was. And to my memory, that is probably the largest crowd that we've had at the tree lighting. And I will say on a side note, that we were called out by the police department and challenged to a decoration contest. Needless to say, we had an inflatable dalmatian on the front bumper, we had a snow machine on the back, and we had lights go over all around the engine, and I think we won. But who's keeping score, right? I am. So a couple of things, as we close the year, and we start working towards our expansion with the new station and everything else, we have unemployment, a couple of employment opportunities that are going on. And for the first time, when an apartment expands and doubles, basically, so we go from one station to two stations. It is probably the biggest, I guess, growth move that any organization can make, because you're actually doubling. And so for officers, and maybe not 100% of your members, but for officers, where we have four supervisors that had nine people that were qualified to fill that position, counting actors. We now have nine people covering eight positions. And so what we noticed is, as we were forecasting this and working through the changes, that we were going to find ourselves short of mid-range supervisory positions. So a decision was made with the board, and we are hiring two lateral positions. We've advertised, and we opened them up a couple of weeks ago, and they'll be open through the 27th. And what that'll do is that'll help us bridge that gap as we get into the retirement age for a round of our employees in the next five or six years. Succession planning, basically, is what that is, to make sure that the continuity of service that we want and you expect continues into the future. So a good thing, if you know somebody that is a firefighter, career firefighter, that is looking to come to a great place to work, we are taking those applications now. Also, we have our halftime maintenance and support services person is going to retire at the end of February. And so we are looking for somebody that is versatile, if you know somebody that might be interested in that halftime employment, twenty hours a week, very flexible. Send them to me. I'd love to talk with them, and that will open up in January. Let's see, weather and flooding, and I know the city does a really good job tracking that, forecasting one-twenty-four to close this weekend due to water, so just be aware of that, plan around that. And on a side note, for years, the district has been very happy to partner with the city on the car charging station that we have in our back parking lot. Unfortunately, it has reached the end of its service life. And I've been talking with the city a little bit about this, some of the staff, and, you know, it's still functional, and they won't support its service anymore. And we've been buying a service agreement since we installed the thing, just to make sure it maintains functionality, but they won't even do that anymore. And so as long as it's functional, we plan to maintain it. If there is some way, grants or anything else, if we modernize that element, we'll want to talk about that. But what's most important is we have to dial over to the city, just for the public to know, that if you're relying on that, if it breaks, it's out of service until we find a replacement for it. So just a heads-up warning, we're looking, and we're happy to continue the partnership, to do something to help and support somewhere else as well. Overall, I would just like to say, you know, despite some of the challenges and the difficulties that we of the community have had over the last year, we're very proud of the collaboration and the things that we've been able to accomplish. Everything from disaster preparedness, the community events like the tree lighting that I mentioned earlier, and then the wellness committee, trying to react to everything. And I just want to say thank you for that. And reflecting to the year, it's very important to know that when you need somebody in the community, whether it's a uniform or not, people step up and they do make a difference. And so that's one of the things that brought me here and keeps me here. And I just wanted to say thank you for that. I look forward to the next year. So with that, happy holidays, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to add that that was one of the things that got left off my report, is the tree lighting. And our staff and the volunteers in the Chamber of Commerce did an absolutely incredible job.
They did.
Our public works crews were out for, what, Steve was a week or two weeks putting up lights. And the reverse order of the tree lighting, and the guy with the white beard coming down into the park made a huge difference in the feel, and many of us went away with a feeling like it was a Hallmark movie. So it was definitely, I think, from my perspective in twenty years here, had the best community feeling of any lighting we've had, with the diversity of folks. And I have to say, it's pretty amazing to be sitting down by the tree, waiting for the sleigh to come down, and see the marching band come down, and then the flood of people, just huge, street-wide, coming down into the park. It was pretty special. And so for every volunteer that helped out with that, thank you for making it just an amazing community event. And thank you for all that you guys do to keep our community safe each year.
Chief, just a wonderful question on the charging station. How often is that used at the park station?
So it's interesting. I'll be honest with you, we don't break even. I mean, we don't, because we keep the cost of electricity so low, and then the cost of the maintenance agreement and everything that the district has taken on, but we've seen it as a service to the community. But to your question, I see a car there, I would say at least every other day, and some days more often than that, and by proximity. For some people that commute, what they'll do is they'll drive their car there, they'll park it, charge it, they'll hop on the bus from the parking ride or whatever, and then they'll come back. Sometimes they use it to go shop, because I've asked somebody, I said, so how does this work for you, and what's the target for you? They'll come into town and shop, walk up and down Main, and then wait for a couple hours, all the charges, and then wait to go. And I think the position, what sold it when we got to Grand originally, ten years ago, was that we are in the main traffic route of Highway 2, 520, and the rest of that. And it's a pretty targeted landing zone for people that are, you know, the range has gotten better on some of the electric vehicles, but unfortunately, our charger is so outdated. It's the old 110 version, and it takes quite a bit longer than some of the fast ones that are out there now. So I hope that the city is able to find, whether it's with us or someplace else or whatever, another place or something, new equipment that'll work, because I do see people using it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you super much, and happy holidays and a happy new year.
Same to you, Chief. Next up, we have a presentation for the 2019 Summer Stage Rappa by our contractor, Cass Holden. So welcome, Cass, and thank you for all of the work needed this summer to pull off an excellent summer stage.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council. I just need to take a moment and make sure that I, just to get. Okay, only minor technical difficulty. First of all, a little bit about me. I met and talked to most of you, but maybe a holiday, so I just will introduce myself a little bit. I've been involved with the city in one way or another for at least 25 years. Either as a volunteer, a part-time employee, contract employee, appointee, or elected official. I've been a real estate broker for 22 years here in Duval, and for 10 years, I have produced the Summer Stage summer concerts. And so I'm here to talk to you tonight about one of my favorite topics, and that's music in Duval. So I would just like to tell you what Summer Stage is about and what happened last year. So this is our annual report, and Summer Stage is a program of the City of Duval Cultural Commission. So it's not a separate nonprofit, it's not a different arts organization, it's actually a department within the city budget under a cultural commission. It began in 2001 with four performances, when Mayor Blake, who's asked Arts Commissioner Carolyn Butler, hey, we've got this new park, can we do some concerts in there? And so she took a little time and figured it out, and they had four performances out first year. One of them was actually Shakespeare. And they used to build a plywood platform on the, where the beach is, the Menform Park, and then they have to tear it down every year until we got the first stage. Things went really well, and in 2014, it was just getting too crowded down on the beach side of the park. So we relocated it to the big side of the park, and it was a big success. We added the bear garden and the food trucks, and it just has really expanded the experience. I've had so many comments since then, since 2014, about people saying it feels like it's really someplace special, especially in the park in Little Duval. So Summer Stage presents a variety of musical styles, that's something that we like to do, is really mix it up. If you're going to do music, think about it intentionally. And people come down hearing that it's good, and they listen to it and go, "I like it." And then sometimes they don't even bother to look at the schedule, they just come because they feel like they know it's going to be a good time. And that's not even just in the beer garden. So this year, we had soul, rock, reggae, ska, country, and reggae. And the very bottom right-hand medieval belgician music playing classic rock covers was one of our biggest successes, it was one of the weirdest things we did. And they were from Europe, from Belarus, playing traditional handmade medieval instruments, and some traditional songs, and also covering classic rock songs. So that's a little bit about Summer Stage. We bring in top regional musicians. We have welcomed Grammy winner, not a nominee, and Rock and Roll Hall of Fame executives to our stage. This is Andrew Jocelyn, and he, this was back in 2011, and he has since become a Grammy nominee, playing with Macklemore. And this is Steve Lawson, who's a Rock and Roll Hall of Famer, along with Mike DeRozier and Roger Fisher, who were with Hark. And our Grammy winner was actually Eric Tinkstad, who played at Summer Stage before I was presenting Stryder County, which is him. So we're not going after big names, we're going after who we can get to come and play for the price that we can afford to pay them. So we do a lot of shamoing with them and tell them what a wonderful community we have, and it's not made up, it's 100%. You know, we do a little presentation to sell the musicians to come on a Wednesday night. And because of the community that we have here, and we have a little bit of reputation, we're able to get some really interesting talent. And sometimes people will say, "Why don't you hire local bands?" There's a lot of local musicians. And because Summer Stage is different, there's opportunities locally for local musicians to play, and we try to support them. I go to as many performances as I can of local musicians, but they are seen around. And so the reason Summer Stage draws as many people as it does, an average of up to about 600 people a week, is because someone that they would have to go and pay $15 to $20 to downtown staff to see. And we're paying them half of their normal rate here in Duval, because it's for free and it's all ages. So that's kind of the thought behind Summer Stage. It was, it began that way, I continued it that way, and so if someone thinks there's a better idea, that this is the philosophy that we've been using. So some other things besides just music that happened in the park. This was this last year, 2019, when a lone red wolf escaped from Cedar Crest and was terrorizing the children, but, oh, it was just Austin James. We've also had, in addition to the typical birthdays and anniversaries, office parties, we used to have kids crafts, but now it's gotten too big. At one point, for a couple of years, we had ice cream vendor, that's now morphed into food trucks. One year, we had a musician who was also an artist, and we exhibited his art. And for the centennial, we brought down a big piece of plywood with a picture of a logger and his dog on the front, we cut out their faces so people could stick their heads in and keep their pictures. Now, with 2020 being the 20th anniversary of Summer Stage, we may come up with some interesting ideas along those lines to celebrate and just kind of celebrate Duval and Summer Stage's place in Duval. So 2019, the report for this past year. Oh, that was supposed to... It was a nod to the 50th anniversary of Stock, so that's kind of where that design was influenced by. So the budget, and I broke it down into expenses and income on two separate pages to make it more visible. So the city budget had us at $20,500 for this year, with personal expense of $8,500, for a total of $29,000. And so this, on the number column to the left, right there in the middle of the page, it shows the total actual expenses were $26,680. So that was expenditures below budget. And then the income, under the city budget for sponsors, it was $15,000. And the city budget just shows that as one lump sum, but we basically look for money anywhere we can pull it in. And so we had $11,250 in sponsors. I got an additional grant from ForeCulture. And ForeCulture is Key County's organization that spends their arts money. And then we had the Beer Garden, that is a vendor of the city's, and we brought in $1,411, which was really good considering that it totally rained for two weeks. So it did not stop the beer drinkers. So the PUC, the full amount, brought in in cash, $13,461, minus the total expenses. It would appear that $13,219 would come from the general fund, but there's a sustained support grant that the cultural commission receives from ForeCulture. And in 2019, that amount was $8,500. And that can be applied in any way that the cultural commission chooses. So I don't know how much of that $8,500 would be applied towards Summer Stage, I would imagine a large amount. So we'll just say, for example, $5,000 to $6,000, that would leave $4,000 to $5,000 out of the general fund. So the takeaway is that we didn't bring in as much as the city budgeted for sponsorship, but we spent less, and so you're probably, you know, the city's always been put in something, we just try to minimize that as much as possible. But if you're just looking at that net sheet, it'd be about $1,000 shy of what council intended to be brought in.
Castle, I might conjecture a little bit. To Castle's credit as well, it took a long time to get things up and rolling for a year, so she got a very late start. And we updated our sponsorship packages to see if we could generate more revenue. And so in this case, from that change and the late start, we still got very close to where we're supposed to be. Council was fair to the text to give the program, I'm fair to what we get, but without a financier, we weren't able to get that program finalized enough to line and make sure that all the state law requirements, which we'll be trying again next year. But this year, Castle will begin with an much earlier start, and will have more assistance for me. We've identified some additional potential sponsors as well that might be able to help out, and I suspect we'll be able to do better than this year. But considering her late start, Castle, not only is it amazing that we got where we're at, she pulled it off under budget, and I think she deserves a lot of respect and recognition from us at the city for doing that, especially since it's such a successful concert series, the first two being pretty much raining out. That was amazing, I couldn't believe there were 100 people at a concert, it was pouring in rain. It was pouring.
And so really, the philosophy about sponsorship is that we have to figure out how much value can be brought out of the event. You can, I have an idea, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't, but get both for a sponsor. You know, what can, how, you have to give a sponsor value. It's an advertisement, it's not a donation, and so you have to have ways to provide enough value to support the amount of money you're asking for. And so we have that. And then it's a matter of how much time do you have to talk to as many people as you can think of? And so really, time is always the limiting factor, because at some point, you have to stop and do the promotion, and actually put the program on. So you could come up with a lot more if you had a lot more time. And so it's just a matter of trying to, you know, gauge how much time you can actually spend on procuring more sponsors. So if there's a big project that comes up in the middle of it, unexpectedly, you're going to have to take time away from that. So some use of sponsorship will fluctuate, and that's generally why, it's because of But there's more good news. The efficiencies that we came up with last year brought a total savings of $25,000, and I feel pretty good about that number. Two weeks into the season, I met with Mr. Lucheski and Mr. Chris, the public works supervisor, and said, "Hey, we can really cut back the public works involvement. They have been supporting us for setup and breakdown at the end of the night, and we figured out a way between the three of us to manage the stage and the production so that I could just have one person who's outside, who just comes in to do that public work, basically, and not having to pay two public works employees overtime to, you know, break that down." And so that worked out real well, and that would be the case moving forward now that we've got that arrangement worked out. I went back to Plissos, bought an in-kind food sponsor, which saves us up to $300. We provide food for the musicians and the sound people, because they're in the park for five to eight hours, depending on the band and what else is involved. So they really can't leave to go get dinner. And so we just, you know, provide something, some fruit, sandwich, a lot of beverages. Graphic design was done in-house, that's definitely cost saver. You may notice the difference, but I think it works, so. And then I did give the additional $800 for Culture grant by using one of the musical acts that they helped promote. So in case some people are very detail and data-oriented, I brought it down, the overall cost, and this is something that when I worked with the cultural commission, that we did on all of our events, and just said, "The overall cost per person that it's costing." So for Summer Stage, this is including Mike Heim, all the personnel, and all the 74-person. So then if you took away all of the sponsors and the grants and all the income, the total city cost was $389 a person, but that's not counting applying the sustained support. So if you apply $5,000 to sustain support, it's like about $245 or something. So that's really a good price for the attendance. So personnel, that's me. It was Country Music Week, so I wore cowboy hat, and I had my Fat Kid, Austin James t-shirt on, because it was the week before Austin was the surprise guest. So I was just doing a little hint there. And what I do as a Summer Stage manager, it's a contract position, there's no benefits, I'm responsible for the sponsorships, booking the music and the sound services, all the marketing and promotion, managing the day of show to make it look like it's just fun and easy, because when it's not, we don't want people to know that, we just want them to have a really good time managing the budget and providing the city with report. So how the season went was, we had total attendance of 3,400, and it rained two weeks, the first two weeks. Now, if you look at the photo on the left, it may look like it's a little blurry, there's kind of some white vertical lines going through there, that's rain. This band, Chica Suite, was so much fun, they actually, they play a lot of covers, they have original music also. They played every song they knew that referenced rain. And it was an incredible time. You notice the picture on the right, there's people out there dancing, there's people had all the canopies, we brought down everyone we knew who had canopy, brought one, and it was over 100 people. And it was really one of the funnest experiences that we've had in the park, so that was kind of interesting. I believe that if it had not rained those first two weeks, we would have had over 4,000 in attendance, which would have been a really strong number. And so going back to the year that we moved into the big park, attendance was 2,100, and that was five years ago in 2014. So that just shows you how much the program has grown since we've gone to the beer side. We come onto it, it's a big park, and there's only one Summer Stage manager. So this year, we had five volunteers putting in for seven hours, and there were approximately 60 rides in the golf park. And the golf park is there for people, it's a big park, and the parking is way up high, so we ask people who have mobility problems to be dropped off at the big entrance kiosk going down. And the golf park, just starting at 6 o'clock, just goes back and forth, waits for somebody, when somebody comes, they take them down, they come back up. And we're given nine to 11 people rides back and forth each week. So the golf park has really become key in providing those kinds of services for the So how do we get everybody else down there? Marketing is the name of the game, and we do that through Facebook, it's really one of the key, and Duval is solable. We do go to Facebook a lot. We have currently 1,016 followers on the Summer Stage page and 961 likes. I think the city has about 3,000. So, you know, it's good for music for an event. And we do a lot of, you know, we put stuff up about the bands, we always refer people on Facebook to the website where we can put more details about the event. And so really, Facebook is like a reminder. We post on our Facebook, and then we also forward to the community pages, so we're reaching a bigger audience. And then the cultural commission does have a website, that Summer Stage has a section on, and that's where we put all of the details about if you need a ride on the golf course. You know, what can you bring down? It's all ages, it's, you know, whatever, all the information that those people would want. We do print marketing, still a fair amount, we write press releases and send them out to different places. We do posters and bookmarks, and this upcoming year, we'll have an ad in the visitor's guide. And there are some people eyeing out about Summer Stage by seeing a poster. There are people in Duval who are not on their computers. And so we need to, we try to make sure to have somebody mailed, you know, shows up in their mail every year. And we also have strategically placed outdoor banners. Went Big One Across the Street last year, I went going at Big Rock, and I think that's a really good place. So we just keep an eye out and see where people are going to notice it. And then actually, at the last concert last year, we had a drum operator, and so I have drum footage, and I'm not sure how to work that in, I didn't really have time to put it into this report, but I do have that, I think I may have sent it to Sean, but that was kind of cool, so. Then, lastly, our sponsors, which, all of these sponsors have been with us for many years, if not the entire time the event's been running, and they're very generous, and they're a lot of fun, and we really try to support them and give them their value. We could not get any, the new construction, housing, this past year. A lot of them said, a lot of them, there's three or four potentials, and one of them said, "Oh, no, that's okay," which I took as, "We don't really need to do this again." And then the others were, "Well, we haven't really started building in Duval yet." So we have their names now, we'll see if we can pull them in this next year. And we will be starting asking much earlier this year, and in fact, those conversations have already begun. And that's pretty much the end of it, as far as some thoughts for next year. I just wanted to put out there that it would be really great if we were able to get the banner poles fixed or reworked, and I've talked to Mr. Lucheski with some ideas about that. The ones that are closest to the park are the ones that are having a problem. And then we also need to make some decisions on how to handle people who want to sell things in the park, because there's some very specific legal aspects to that, that we want to make sure the city's protected on, and that we're being community partners, but not making people mad. And then the food truck vendors, we charge a fee to the beer garden, the food trucks, we have none. The ones that are closest to the park are the ones that are having a problem. And then, we also need to make some decisions on how to handle people who want to sell things in the park because there's some very specific legal aspects to that, that we want to make sure the city's protected on and that we're being community partners, but not making people mad. And then, the food truck vendors, we charge a fee to the beer garden. The food trucks, we have not because we're kind of on that cusp of, we need them to come, people want them, so we're providing a service. But, once we can figure out how much money they're making, then we can determine what's a fair amount to charge. And so, when I previously worked on Summer Stage, I would periodically check in with other cities who have events, who have food trucks and just say, "What are you guys doing now, are you charging them?" And if you start charging them, then maybe they won't come and then you're scrambling, you know, and then people are mad because they can't get food. So, now that we have people trained to get food and it did appear last summer that the trucks were busy pretty much the whole time, you know, there was consistent traffic, but again, it's only an hour and a half show, so that's where we are in that. And we do have an agreement and so, you know, we'll be talking to management here to figure out, make sure that we're where we should be as far as the legal requirements and providing the best services for the people coming to the park. So, do you have any questions? Very thorough. Thank you so much, guys. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, the most important part. Had to take this out of the presentation because I thought it was messing it up. What people are saying about Summer Stage now, or last summer, these are all on Facebook. Sue Shaw said, "Summer Stage shows are the best." Cam Torrance said, "This will be my first visit to your city and this event. So thankful, you have my favorite artist, Chance McKinnon, and next, Faye Shaggy Sweet. Great job on the selections." And Debbie Neal said, "Thank you, Duval Summer Stage, I love how this town supports the arts, from visual art to music to sculpture." That's my final. Thank you so much. All right, moving on, we have another presentation for the Library Board Annual Update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Denise Guallo and I am the Regional Manager for King County Library System. I represent Duval, Carnation, Skybridge, Woodinville, North Bend, Redmond Ridge Libraries. And I work closely with Julia Rood on the Library Board, she's here with us. We have some handouts, it could be, you can just, thank you. So, you'll have the PowerPoint with opportunities to make some notes with you as well as a handout produced by KCLS, which focuses on a city priority, which I know is to support human services here in the city of Duval. And one specific thing that we do here in the libraries that supports human services, for the last two years, we have done summer meals, books, and power packs. And we've partnered together with the KCLS Foundation, the Snow Palmy Valley Community Network, Carnation Farms, and the Leet and Power Packs to provide summer meals and books to crazy families. This year, we provided 184 lunches, 145 books, and 82 power packs to families. And this is a raw-made effort and we're hoping this year for it to be more robust. We provide summer meals, one day a week in Duval and one day a week in Carnation. And then, the third document that you have, and I'll leave that to the Council to read on your own, is a really nice report produced by Jenny Carter, who's our Children's Librarian, who is coordinating this effort at Carnation and Duval, which gives a lot more details and photos of what's happening for summer lunches, so I encourage you to take a look at that document. And then, some of the other things that we're doing in the library here, things that we do for teens, we have a part-time children's teen librarian and her name is Kristen Edwards and she also works at Carnation and Duval. And one of the things that she does every August, which is a free convention for teens, in which she gives the teens a membership and they learn leadership roles and they have a chance to shine by doing an art show or a cosplay contest. And then, they also just share in something that they all enjoy doing. So, this is something that she does at Core Days and has a really good group of teens that come and do that together. And then, one of the things that we found has been really popular for adults in this community, of course, anything involving art, we had glass painting in July and we have a really good group that love to come and do that activity. And then, also nature programs, so seem to be the big hits where we have sort of standing there molding at these kinds of events. So, we have an Adult Services Librarian, her name is Kathleen O'Keefe, and she provides programs at Carnation and Duval as well as Woodinville. So, she's gonna keep booking those kinds of programs and she knows that's what the community likes and will continue to do that in 2020. Now, here's the Duval Library by the numbers. As some of you may know, we opened up the new library here in 2012. And I would say every year since 2014, we've had anywhere from 131,000 to 144,000 visitors come through the door. We have a door counter that kind of tells us how many folks are coming in the library. And checkout of physical materials overall for KCLS has gone down as ebook downloads have gone up. KCLS is the leader in the nation in downloads. Last year, 6.2 million downloads happened for KCLS. And the checkouts for Duval has gone down some, about 30,000, but they still had quite a checkout in 2018 at 171,000. The one thing that people don't always think about in terms of counting, we count how many computer sessions and I thought this was pretty amazing numbers for Duval. We counted over 13,000 computer sessions in Duval. And it's one person sitting for a session at the computer in the library in 2018 and it totaled, as you can see, 468,000 minutes of time on the computers, so they're definitely using the computers in the library. We have on record as of 2018, over 6,000 residents that have KCLS library cards, which is a pretty good number. We'd like to continue to increase that as Duval grows. And then, we also have over 5,000 cards for the Breville School District and teacher e-cards, which is also great. Last year, we had did over 200 programs with about 3,800 in attendance. So, those are some big, broad numbers for the library. And here is your Duval Library and Library Board. We have Amanda Lowell and she supports the Library by sharing information about library events, programs through social media channels and word of mouth. I really rely on the Library Board to help support me in my work, to help put the word out, they're the ears on the ground, they're in other venues in the city, that they can pass the word about what we're doing, or what people would like to see at the library, they can help feed that back to staff and we can try and put that into our planning and services. Wendy Mamon, who just joined us this past year, she supports the Library by advocating community needs in regards to social service programs and mental health and is a fan and supporter of Storytime, yay. Melinda McCallum has been our longest-standing board member, is the chairperson and supports the Library through current community initiatives. We also have a youth board member who has joined us and been re-elected and that's Aiden Nenek. And of course, Julia Rood here, who's with us and she supports by fostering outreach and dialogue to better understand the community needs and is a fan and supporter of ebooks, so she's almost making that 6.2 million for circulation. And then, Ernst Nook, who recently joined us and I know that he's stepped down and will be replacing him as a board member hopefully soon, but his effort lately has been getting events out into the city newsletter, which has been really helpful so that that gets a few news, bit of access. And then, one last thing I'll say before I'll ask for questions, as you all mentioned, we use mental health first aid. I also attended that class on November 23rd, that was very helpful for me, you know, as a parent, as a beginning member. And I am supporting all of my staff here at the Duval Library and Carnation Library because it is an eight-hour class to attend that. So, I'm making that a priority for my staff in this library, so I want you to know that. This is foremost on my mind in support of human services. I want the city to see the library as a partner at that table and, you know, reach out to me, reach out to my staff, and to find ways to do that. And I'm looking for ways that we can partner so that we can all leverage our resources to this need and other needs that are human services needs. Do you have any questions? Any questions? Does Council member Lowell?
First of all, my husband is probably down there like three days a week, at least. And one of the things I really appreciate, there's two things I really appreciate about the library, so I want to say this. First of all, a lot of people don't realize of partnership with the Seattle Public Library. And that's really important because they have quite a stash of books and ebooks as well. And so, I think that's awesome. But the other thing is, this is just a little thing for those of us that really enjoy cinema, is there's a lot of really cool old movies that you can't get on Netflix or whatever or you have to pay for them. And so, as a community resource, a lot of people don't realize the extent to which you can get things like movies and music through the library. And so, for families that are on a budget, it's a great thing, you know, whether it's kids' stuff or, I mean, we watched The Guns and that of our own just the other day. And so, just thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Plus, it keeps him busy. Because he reads like three books a week, so.
That's awesome.
That he's into it.
So, do you use the canopy services because that has movies and...
You know, honestly, I don't know what all he uses. He, but I, what I can tell you is, he is on, he looks way into the future. And so, he's got things scheduled out like months, you know, and of course, you don't know what's gonna pop up. So, he's, he's into it and he, and I'm very thankful you keep him busy.
Mine has been recently retired too, so they shouldn't.
Yeah.
I also just wanted to mention how much the community relies on the space that is available for rent, it's used by so many. And it just popped into my head, so I attended that, I forget what it was called, the Mental Health Community Forum, I told, they were talking about places teens can come together and it just popped into my head, that might be a location they could also look at to get together and, you know.
Yes, opening up that idea to, I mean, Jen is our Children's Librarian, she's 40 hours, my teen librarian is hours. One of the things I'm hoping for this coming year is to see if I can get some additional hours for teen services because it's just not enough. It's not sufficient to support teens out here in the valley. So, I'm trying to see how I can leverage that on a system level, budget-wise, to see if we can get at least another position, whether or not my teen services will have more hours or not and if we can afford that in the budget.
How is your, you have a volunteer homework for...
We do as well.
Are you having parents to assist you?
Some, there's some students, it's just not enough that I think that I want to use that service. But I want ways that we can serve teens and just be there because we're, we're different than the school, we're different than parents, but we can be supportive adults in the community where they can be in a space and we're not gonna ask them questions and, but they can feel safe being in the library. So, I want us to help be that space, you know, in all of our libraries. And I also am gonna be working with the other region that covers Palmy and North Bend, all of the valley, to see how we can collaborate with as many community organizations, school district, to be another place for teens.
Any others?
Thank you so much for your report, while we're waiting for our committee.
Thank you, I'm glad you're meeting the library tomorrow, I might just have to come.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on, we have not many public hearings this evening. We have three items in the business. First of all, is the Genevill 1999, they've authorized mayor's signed agreement to seek to conservation futures, air global cooperation agreement for open space acquisitions projects, Duval Village personal acquisition, and operate staff to execute properly acquisition. The discussion and our decision, Mr. Lucheski.
Good evening, Mayor. Steve Lucheski, Health Works, supporting this item on the half of, he's not here. So, the idea of, it seals up many, many, many years of project and then two separate grants. I think one item to note is, one grant seemed to be leveraged in the other, there are no costs to the city other than managing some time to obtain the property through the final process for the Duval Village project. If you scroll deep in the agreement, you can see a little silver in the yellow, a small image, that is 6.6 acres that are being obtained through this grant and, I don't think I wrote any on our notes, there would be a budget amendment required because we're recognizing the agreement and an increase in expenditure, but the increase in expenditure is offset the whole grant revenues of 14,500 to 17,500 through 32,000. With that said, any other questions? I am not exactly sure if Laura wanted discussion and decision report or neither, I'm sure we'll take whatever at this point. Any questions?
Any questions from Council? Any thoughts about the news for either this evening or on the consent agenda at the first meeting in January? Councilmember Howard, I think a consent agenda would be great. Is there agreement and not consent agenda? Okay, so bring this back to consent agenda for the first meeting in January. Thank you, Steve. Moving on, Genevill 19800, a further note for is mayor to direct staff to perform the average work for codes for D-1 building concrete deck installation projects. Mr. Lucheski.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Ask. So, this is not intended to be anything other than just a conversation starter and informing the Council that, early on last year, we took a project that was demo, repair, replace, and kind of carved it out with three separate tasks, so we've gone step by step. So, with the demo, we have now repaired the structure as well as all the bonded materials and we are ready to replace. I do want to caveat, the siding that was removed from the west and the south faces has only been paper sheeted back at the kind of the sill plate or banner plate. Part of that is not knowing what goes back will dictate what material goes back, where the thresholds are as well as the flashing. So, in order to not do something twice, we just want to do it once. So, that is remaining the building part, we have not finalized our part because they want it leather sealed and they don't consider that leather sealed. We have time to finalize our part, but one, I don't have any more money to contract and two, I don't want to spend money twice. So, if you know what we're doing, great, if we don't, then we'll come up with another plan. But with that said, we are ready to move forward, so I'd like to know what Council needs us to provide over the next, it would be a great goal to get this hammer down in a month and what we'd like to do for permanent replacement. We can put some bids together, we have expended about $5,300 on the $12,950 contract with Kovak Architects. So, we have money left, we are not to finalize yet, we can be bid ready fairly quickly, but there's still some work to do to get bid. And that also depends on what we do and what we want to build. I know we talked in the past about wood versus concrete and we gave our architect's estimate on the cost difference, difference between the two items, there was some, I guess hesitation... There was some hesitation at stamping and coloring, which we could always do based and have those things as a bid alt. I do believe for the longevity of the facilities we own, operate, and maintain, and this will be an opportunity that we steer clear as far as we can of deleterious materials such as wood. We'll have to replace them over time. And maybe a little bit of a cost savings on that, but I don't really believe they were the estimate you gave us to go back. But, so what do we need for, what kind of information can we bring back? Staff and the others still recommend a concrete structure that will not degrade over time and will be easy to maintain. But just want to make sure you know where we are, and we're ready to move to the third phase. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Councilmember Michael.
The project near and dear my heart. I guess there's two thoughts. Thought number one is, it started as a deck replacement, but as we have experienced, it's something different now. And my view is that another piece of this has to do with the other deferred maintenance that was identified when Chief Hert got the inspections done. So that's sort of in one column. So to me, this project has evolved from a deck replacement project to it's something more now. Whether that was planned or not, kind of doesn't matter. You know, we have a facility report that gives us more information than when we started the deck design. You know, we found things that hadn't had immediate corrective, you know, action. So it's not just deck replacement to me anymore. It's, I would never use the word restoration, it's a rehabilitation project now. And how this all blends together, I'm not going to say I have an immediate definition. But I think that's something worth discussing, whether it's in a council meeting or, you know, talking to, to folks. But it's not, it's not doing part of it and then not having a strategy for the rest of it, kind of doesn't make sense to me. The other part of it is, and I was new on council when this project came forward, is that I think the issue with the deck, aside from, you know, concrete versus wood, and I understand the rationale, is the size of the deck. And what I heard from council members at the time, as a new council member, was the general concern that could it be something not quite as, let's say, grand, how grand meaning big, not necessarily expansive? Because what I thought, and I remember some very specific things that Councilmember McHenry said, and some early fates in that discussion. So I guess what I would like to hear from my colleagues is the issue of how big the deck is. Because this is, this is a complete replacement of the deck as it was before. And maybe that's just not something we can afford, that big, in light of these other things that are still outstanding. And so this is really, and then we don't really know what the whole, you know, as I said, rehabilitation's really, you know, we only have part of the number. So the risk of proceeding with one piece, then having this other piece, is kind of like what we found when we took off the deck, right? We found things that hadn't dealt with before the deck. So I guess the bottom line to me is, the nature of the project has, has just unavoidably changed. I mean, it's not like this was anything, it's not, it's not, it's not anything, it was, we didn't have enough information when this whole thing started. And so I'd like to know how the next piece of this gets resolved because of the budget implications. We only had, you know, we've already said seventy-five thousand for facilities repairs. Well, we know there's a good seventy-five thousand out there. How does the depot fit into that? And then what are the other things that are in the building that need to be addressed? And I remember there were some things in those reports that were, they weren't, you know, over the top crazy, but they were things that were also deferred maintenance in the building. And then there's just the scale of the deck. Can it be less large? Can we have, do we exit a little different? Those are the things I heard from my colleagues. So I guess I'd like to know how we feel about them now that we spent. We only have expected funds remaining, sixteen thousand and six hundred dollars approximately from the original allocation. It is a favorable project, I guess, in a way.
Like to see it saved.
Councilmember McHenry. So I had a couple questions or thoughts. So first off, and I'm not trying to take a couple steps back here, and I know that we kind of collected things that concrete, and I care what you're saying on maintenance, but just for my own standpoint, is there a way to word the bid just so that, or maybe they're completely different contractors, I don't know, but to also just know what the bid for a wood deck would be, whether or not we want to do it, just so that we can say, well, we decided to go for this because, you know, and explain that to the community.
So that can be handled, but our contract for plan creation is for one type, right? So we can, we could implement our contract, and it doesn't cost us much to do. It's not like it's double. But we could put a bid together for, and so remember scaling this down, we, one, we look at flipping it so you can access from the left or from the east. And then two, this is the ADA route into, I do not believe my use that you would shrink the width of the west side. You could shrink the width of the south side because it's more of just a game point into so that, you know, we could just probably meet minimum requirements on west, I'm sorry, the east, no, the south side. And then west, a little more spacious, maybe it could be trimmed in its distance from the pathway of the north side, so that more of that should be, I can imagine to, I'll just throw that on the screen.
Yeah, because I think, you know, you're talking about size of the work Councilmember Michael mentioned, that's interesting to think about. I don't know if there's a minimum recommended size, like you said, for ADA, but also fire, safety, community use as well, you know, we want to think about all those.
Yeah, and I was pointing to the, you know, this edge can be narrower more, right? Since it's your access weight in, that against the building that's for access.
The back part, I don't know, with, because I'm thinking there would obviously be stairs off of it, can, I don't know if that realistically, but the distance from the door could be shrunk that much, unless you change the shape of the deck.
I think it where the doorway is, because I know there's definitely a doorway, which is remaining, it's here, and there's another secondary door here. So I don't know if this could be just brought in.
Right. And then I, oh, sorry. And then I just want to follow up, do we have any update on the original donor or family? If there was potential interest there for them to?
They're more than happy to support the project. They did not commit too many dollars. I think that might be any electeds reaching out a little more than some regular Hope Works guy. So Jen was very open to discuss, he did not commit to be financially, he committed to, you know, doing what the city needed to do to, you know, gain access back to the structure. They didn't have any problems with, because we're supposed to check what going for the agreement on what we do, we don't do. So he was reasonable, and we would be reasonable, like we don't worry. But he didn't even say, I'm not supporting with a checkup next time. If somebody would like to ask instead of me, maybe that's a different conversation.
Well, my last quick question is, so with the concrete, is it, I mean, what would be a good, with the site, I think about that it's basically right on the edge of a wetland, I think a ground shifting, I mean, is it, what would a typical lifespan, I know concrete seems really permanent, but it does still have a lifespan, is it like crazy, like a hundred years? Or what is the maintenance for concrete that has, you know, pressure, rust, and?
You would have cracked over time, so I did a conversation about the project today. You know, cracking in likely the mass of this relative to the mass of the depot, and you can see kind of, you know, this is the edge of the structure of the depot, and you have this much more dense new structure being, you know, applied adjacent. If there's difference in several time, the building in that deck will probably, outside of how they move, does they move more, or may move certainly differently than the structure of the depots? It's just, it's got strip footing, perimeter footing, and it has a lot less meat along this entire section. So this will have footing as well, but yes, you can't, because they were not built at the same time they were not built. In a way, the structure connected, which you wouldn't want to do, but there might be some, you know, you've seen slot deck commercials and those kinds of things, that's certainly a possibility. There are other materials too, and if that is, you know, council's thoughts, we can either A, just abandon the concrete and go with non-traditional wooden materials, which I'd certainly recommend over wood. Wood was not pressure treated, it was not seared, it lasted eight years, right? So maybe a little longer, but, but yeah, there are alternatives. But I do think space on that west side, it is important space for the use of the building since it's not that interior, you know, it's, it's there, it certainly is nice on the front, and people can kind of come and use that space, but.
Councilmember Howard.
So my biggest concern is just we actually have no money allocated or any idea about their, and just, I sent you another email just looking at the REIT rules, so I kind of think we either need it on the CIP and, or the maintenance, calling it maintenance, it looked like the rules were pretty strict. Basically, you have to prove that you can pay for every single item on your CIP, and then you can use it for maintenance. So we would really, I mean, I don't, it'd be pretty hard to prove we have enough funds for all our CIP items.
So the whole law is absence identifying the current park CIP list. There's a very vague depot improvement line, so just need to figure out the validity of that, I guess, a little more. We were, you know, one of the options in the past has been using REIT money for operations and maintenance, but that sunsetted through the state law, because that has been eligible for use, because we never used it, I guess it didn't really ever come to needing to be discussed. But with that said, it'd be a capital project, we'd have to make sure it was on capitalist, and then it would be a pool for expenditure out of REIT funds. So we can double check that it is or is not on the list today, except there is a line in the CIP for parks that spells out depot, instant improvements in the facility. I couldn't find a qualifier of, it means A, B, C, D, E, G, so a little more too.
Yeah, I'd like to look at that a little bit more. I mean, I know you can put a bid out and then retract it if you don't want.
Well, no, we don't want to do work for the sake of doing work.
Exactly.
We've got to be a business.
Exactly. So I was hoping we could have some kind of conversation about how to acquire funding for that. I guess we'll be at least seventy thousand dollars short if we come in anywhere near what the bid estimate is. So that's a pretty big chunk of money that we don't have, so.
Councilmember Hook. So I need to apologize, we kind of tied this, we've already talked about, and already told us, because it's been so long we don't remember this, but why couldn't we access it from the north side and not have that long south, you know, take off the L, and just come in off the side?
We, I'm sure you can go back to the April or May video and maybe watch the conversation again, but we asked our tech if you could flip it.
But I'm not talking flipping the building, I'm just saying, isn't there space to have the access?
You could knock out windows, right?
If I'm, is the north side that's got this narrow?
Yeah, this is, north is over here.
That's north.
This is where the concrete walkway comes down from the parking lot, from this side.
Okay. But isn't there, on the, if you go down, isn't that the north side that's small, like you go on there, is that the north side?
Correct.
Okay, isn't there access from there so you don't have to?
No.
There's no way to come in off of, not, I'm talking accessing, really, it's the
This.
West side, but accessing it from the northwest corner.
Right now, yeah. I think we have a power.
I just want to make sure that side of the building is true.
Well, just pull one up, it's just that simple.
Interesting side note, if you go to screen view?
Yeah.
It shows it going in, when this, screen view history there.
Oh my gosh, this is on my computer, it's weird.
I'm just hoping to maybe save some cost in the size of the decking, is what I'm trying to.
Can I add a quick comment to what Councilmember Hook is saying right now? So my, wouldn't it be too, the distance from the sidewalk on the north side seems like the ramp would be too steep to be adiding, or is that possible? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're talking about, is making the ramp entrance from the?
Yeah. And that's right, there.
So, right, deck is over here, just orient everybody, north is up, this is the existing pathway out front, the existing side route deck that's going, that gets further to see what it is from the light. So, so your question, I guess, Councilmember Hook, is from this point, or my point is, could you gain vertical access to the building? I don't believe you could straight run, you might be able to circuitutously get there because you have to have, ramps have certain slopes, they have to have landings every so many feet to be adiding from the line. So it might not be simple. Maybe possible to manufacture, I guess. And that side is vertically lower, right? You know, maybe we're four feet down from door and these threshold, most of the contractors had to get into the building from the left side via ladder, even when the deck was there. So maybe it's five, it should be up, so.
You know.
Councilmember Michael.
So obviously, there's going to be some budget impacts to this anyway, it seems to be. So if you could take a look at, you know, whatever cost containment type things we could build into this deck replacement, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see your, for rough numbers, taking a look at the facility report that was otherwise done, and giving, saying, give us a, you know, some idea of what that kind of phase would look like. Because right now, we have, you know, tear-off phase, we have repair of structure phase, you know, we have the deck replacement phase, and then we have, you know, the other stuff that's in it. So it'd be nice, I think, I think it's actually important for us from an accountability standpoint to have a whole picture, even if it's done in phases. And the other thing that you said to me one time, which I think is important, is you made a comment to me one time about the depot being one of the facilities that actually produces some more revenue. And if we were developers, we would be looking at return on our investment. And I think just as a general practice, it's good to kind of put that information in the mix. It is a property that's attractive, and so there is, you know, this is in the spirit of cost recovery through feet, right? Which is something we keep talking about, we should think about that a little bit. And then I guess the last thing is, we just learned that we are going to get some extra money from King County for parks, open space. And so I don't know how that figures in the mix, because that is a different council discussion. But if we think about this in a series of phases, that might be a resource that is going to come in this year, maybe a little next year, who knows? We know that what that number is this year is what, one sixteen hundred and sixteen thousand. So as we think about parks, improvements, programming, that comes into play. So maybe if you could come back with sort of, as I think of it, a renovation strategy so we can have a whole picture. Because piecemeal decision-making in a building situation, I don't think it's, my view, my experience is that's probably not the best way to go. Better to know what the phases might look like. Again, those surprises, I personally would not like, to minimize the surprises on our renovation, which you can't completely control anyway. So that would be what I would be looking for. Which I think is consistent with Councilmember Howard.
Yes, I'm, great, everybody?
Any other councilmembers want to speak to this? Councilmember Iyer.
Yeah, I, I'm.
definitely getting, I mean, just getting worn out in terms of like, we have to do something to address this. I think maybe, uh, Councilmember Leidl's point in terms of, I mean, there's definitely a lot of points in there in terms of minimizing cost of this plan, but in terms of, if we were going to figure out, I mean, the biggest question, where do the money come from, how are we going to pay for it? Um, and if you're going to expend, you know, significant funds, you know, maybe it's worthwhile to look at the front-end design, how those phases will work, but I think I follow, what can we do in terms of applying in terms of that kind of piece meal of, you know, uh, see what we can get in terms of how it fits into that corner of the park and maybe a couple places. Some of the other half that fit around this. I think the big question, the first question is of course, how do we pay for it? Because that's, I think, the primary question, there's money in itself, I'm sure this, and it shouldn't seem like a great idea, and, you know, I, it's always hard to accept costs of building things, I mean, it seems like you should be able to just go out there and do something for minimal, not cost me out of wood, but it's always blows my mind how much any sort of renovations and even residential renovations cost, or commercial improvements. So, I mean, I, I guess I'm not sure how we've afforded this, I, I, hopefully we can figure it out, because clearly we have to get a plan in place to at least address this within, uh, maybe twenty twenty's to get an interim plan in place at least available by December twenty twenty, so. I, I concur with the April levels that, uh, Councilmember Leidl, Alex.
Yeah, I mean, here's the, um, so.
Okay, is there anyone else that has not spoken to this that would like to speak? All right, Councilmember Leidl.
I just wanted to point out one thing, having a special report, I mean, it's everything from, you know, the roof needs cleaning, uh, thing, that's one of the things that's called out, another thing is, uh, the chimney needs tuck pointing, um, you know, a lot of bunch of loose work's up there. So, you know, going through this, um, do we have to redo the bathroom floor right away? Well, maybe add something that's not a little further down the line, but there, there are some things here in addition to the deck. And, and by doing some of these things, I mean, it could be remarkable, and that is kind of the way I see it, you know, on development side. What kinds of things will give us a return on our investment to make it more viable just for the, for the community, but also not a drain on us, and if you're making thirteen thousand a year on it or something, um, you do get a return on investment. Right?
So a couple of points I'll make before I summarize, and certainly open to more discussion. Staff is not architects, you get people who build stuff and you get engineers. With that said, the inside of the building is managed as it has by a previous caretaker who's known our business and the community, so if we're talking about more major improvements in the inside, those are kind of thoughts and renditions that are out of my toolkit. So if you want us to have an architect look at doing some stuff inside, I have a problem with that, but that's not free and that's not, that's not stacked. Um, if we want to make a whole run to this thing and have a big picture, that's a different story. If you want to take a report, but just make sure I'm staying over the, the points and fix all the things that we're fixing and put that into this plan, that's totally a separate and doable deal. Um, the next steps in general, looking at this project, how it fits into the park CIP, is it on the list, is it not? Second question, second answer, that opens up doors of funding eligibility for it. Um, looking at the other needs we just mentioned, our white outs, no problem. They are estimates, and we have had no revenue this year, we go back to last year, we're closed, and then projected forward. And then, yeah, funding options.
So Mr. Landeschezky, can you clarify anything of you that changes characters building, we need to go through the family, correct?
Correct, and, and I don't think they have any problem making it more usable or more period or non-period, correct? I really don't think Chet seemed to care not being, you know, demeaning to the property, but I think he's like, as long as you guys can get it working, he was fine. Uh, but yes, he certainly might just touch in, he's, I think, square.
Councilmember Nikki.
In regards to that building, over the years, we have, uh, whatever money it has brought in, has not really paid for itself in maintenance, as I recall. Um, it does have a structural problem when you try to use it, I've never tried to use it because heating, cooling doesn't work for that building, and then it has that wall situation, so you can't really rent it there. So it has its limitations, I mean, in a perfect world, what, what I would like to see is that this historical building eventually, us putting all this money into it doesn't really make sense to me, but it would be lovely if it could go to the Heritage Park, that someday in the future will, will happen, which is also connected to the family. And, um, I, at this point, don't, the use that building has had over the last few, I guess, decade, I don't see us throwing a lot of money into it to restore it to that level as, as a big benefit. But it would be nice, it's a historical building and a trade building. Um, some group that advocates for that and really supports trade, who has been one of those, um, who would, we could partner with to maybe help keep that historical building going, but on our own as a city trying to do it and just throwing money into it, it doesn't seem like a very good, I do share your responsibility of the tax payers dollars.
Councilmember Leidl.
Um, I'm not sure how much of work that inspection report requires an architect, but let me give you an example of something on the liability side. The breaker panel has a two hundred amp panel, but the service cable is one gauge, fed from electrical panel, they think, in the precinct. So there's weird stuff like that in that building, and I think we need to be aware of that as well, and I, I'm not proposing, you know, I'm not suggesting that we have to do a full state of restoration on the historic side, I'm just saying there are some little key things in that inspection report that we probably need to address. But I don't, you don't need, you need an electrician on, you know, electrical panel, you don't need a, an architect. So I don't want, don't want my comments to be misunderstood if I wasn't clear, I apologize.
Councilmember Iyer.
I, I guess I would just, I'd like to, questions to ask of the Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Nikki, in terms of your preferred option, having the most historical knowledge and experience of this building or of its installation, you know, what would be, what would be your preferred option in terms of the deck, how, what to do, what are we, I'm struggling, I'm really struggling, because I fear that we need to do something, and I'm, I'm, I'm not ideas, I'm not ideas.
Councilmember Nikki. I'm a pragmatist and practical and looking at the budget and what we have, I felt that the most affordable, ethical solution to that deck would be what I support. And in the future, if someone wants to do something different with that unit, it's fine, but practical, affordable, at this point, I don't feel like we can do anything grand scale. And so I really had staff to tell us what is practical and affordable, and that's what I will tell them.
Any further feedback from Mr. Landeschezky? Okay.
Sorry.
Councilmember Iyer.
So, in that, in that vein of conversation, uh, Mr. Landeschezky, would you name this the most affordable, uh, practical solution? From what I recall, uh, the wood versus non- resist concrete, I think this is the most practical long-term. With that said, I certainly could be trimmed down in places and, you know, maximize to build the minimum we need, but yet get usability back to the structure. For fun, we average about, looks like fifty-five hundred a year if it's being included right into SCRM book on RAP, that's what's registered in SCRM book, so. You got a ten-year plus or minus ROI on fifty thousand a project, so this is already, fifty left, we spent, you know, twenty, right? Yes, those are items we can, we can look back to and move on.
Councilmember Iyer, I should move on to the next agenda here?
Uh, well, I guess I'll just log this, because I'm not sure that we've made any progress tonight, so I guess I would be in support of, with a clear support of minimizing the deck to the greatest extent feasible. And, uh, tell us that that cost is and where that money is coming from. And that's so, you know, I, I was kind of, you know, being mush mouth earlier, so there, there's my official end of the evening for our official, no problem.
Thank you. Um, so moving on to the added agenda, um, AB nineteen dash four one A, release human services grant funding. Uh, again, we had to have legal do a little bit of a review on it to make sure we're doing appropriately to suspend our rules to release the two thousand dollars for, uh, the youth mental health for state classes that have been provided to our community already. Um, council was encouraged at the last meeting to bring this back, and so, um, at this point, we have a basic resolution, council can choose to agree this evening or move it on to the, uh, first, uh, meeting in January. And, uh, if you want me to rehash what's in this, I'm happy to, otherwise, I'd be happy to entertain a motion. And the motion requested council action is listed in the agenda in the author.
Move the, uh, move if you, uh, offer the, uh, passing ordinance AB nineteen ninety-eight.
Put in the, put in the recommendation on the, I don't know if I can view on the agenda.
Dot ordinance, many of you all, that's wrong, sorry, I'm a little off page.
It's the one that I handoffs with my husband, in fact, I have to use. Oh, yes, ahem. The one that I've underbucked.
Okay. I don't know, maybe I'll go do this, is that, is that ready? Okay, I have, okay, I move with the approved resolution of suspending policy guidelines of human service grant funding to spend certain allowance for community loans, task force, express, AB nineteen one zero one A.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, uh, we have one area of unfinished business, AB nineteen dash ninety-eight, dot ordinance by chapter four dot oh eight of the useful code, providing for several buildings to spend establishing effectively. My understanding after our last council meeting that this was, uh, to be discussed at the committee at the whole and moved to the January meeting, um, so I'm assuming that council's having this on here for discussion only this evening. And would council want to continue discussion on this this evening? Right, Councilmember Iyer and then Nikki.
So I think we, we just wanted to see the changes and we were hoping we could see something up online on the screen. I think that's what Jody's doing, and so we would potentially discuss if it looked, uh, like such a simple change. I guess there's the potential we could move forward, but I think that, that mostly we just wanted to be able to view it and discuss.
So Hillary drafted, um, based on the discussion during the committee of the whole meeting, um, Hillary drafted an I review, which is usually the other way around, but worked out. Um, the, okay, I'll try and reduce it a little bit so that you guys can kind of see the whole thing first. Um, so, the one, two, three, four, fifth and sixth wherashes are either new or changed since the last view that you saw. Currently, the fifth whereas now reads, whereas the city council finds it to be in the best interest of the city to ensure the stability of the budget, to review and formally approve by resolution any declassification decisions to ensure compliance within established city budgets. The sixth whereas now reads, whereas the city council finds it in the best interest of the city to ensure the stability of the budget, to be promptly informed of any decision by the mayor to change job descriptions and changes to position titles. Also changed since the packet document is the actual code amendment, which now reads, all requests to rewrite a position's job description or changes to position titles shall be made in writing by the respective department head to the chief administrative officer. The administrative officer will provide the city council with prompt, written notice of any such change. All requests to reclassify a position from one pay range to another shall be made in writing by the respective department head to the chief administrative officer for approval by the city council. A reclassification of an existing position will only be made under the following circumstances. And then the rest is the same as currently in the code.
Councilmember Nikki. It was time for discussion.
Um, just as I was, it's on the agenda part. So, it seems that the resolution is placing greater responsibility in decision-making regarding employees, staffing, position classification, such on the council. Is this, uh, understanding? Okay, so I, I do have concerns with that, and, you know, I don't have a professional background, really, to make a judgment on those types of items. I will say I don't. My experience really with employee classification, wages, all of that would really be sufficient for private sector. Since I recognize that in, in the government sector, things are very different, and we have policies, and then we have, my concern now is with unions, we do have unions to deal with. So, um, currently, I, I need to really talk to legal myself to get clarification on what we're doing here, because I don't want liability for council, so. I'm not really understanding exactly what, it seems to me like these employee type of decisions, we, council, make that decision, and I'm a little concerned, because if our goal is to create restrictions, I'm concerned about what that translates into the managing of the staff and things like training, retention, succession, all these are the things that are part of this idea of employees and managing employees. And I feel like I'm, as a council member, going into an area that I'm uncomfortable making that kind of decision. I am not the manager of the organization, so I do want to, if, if there's a decision tonight, I'm going to probably have to dissent, but I, I need time to look at this, I do want to talk to legal to make sure where, as a council member, what, where am I in this area? Who do I fit? What is my responsibility and what is my liability?
Thank you. Any further discussion out of the end, I'm going to turn it on the screen. Councilmember Iyer.
I, I appreciate the changes that have been, uh, put in place, uh, I think it's true to what we spoke about the last meeting, um, and I think, uh, I'm comfortable with the changes, I respect for Councilmember Nikki, I'd be fine. This, what we're, what we're looking at just now is put into the, uh, agenda for the first January meeting and, um, you allow her the time to, uh, research it further, but I think in terms of, um, I felt like we, I articulated my points in the last two meetings, so I'm comfortable with the record there. Have we, are you ready to move forward with this in the next meeting?
Anyone else? Councilmember Hough.
I'm prepared to move forward with the changes, I like the changes that were made. Um, I really feel strongly that it's the council's job to, um, be looking closely at our budget, and this is part of. And this is part of that. If we don't, we will start seeing, um, job creep and we're gonna, we're gonna have a hard time sustaining our budget into the future. So I just feel really strongly that this is something that should be brought forward.
Councilmember Iyer.
I'm just thinking more about, uh, what councilmember Dicky said. And one thing just being, this is a wordsmithing issue, but one thing I've seen that it can be worded to say the chief administrative officer is who then, i- it's basically being confirmed by the city council. So you would make a proposal to approve that classification and council would be able to confirm or reject it. Does that make sense? So really it is your decision-making to bring it forward to us that you think, I think this is a good idea, I'm gonna propose it. So not every single department request would come to council for approval. You would look at it. Does that make sense? There, there could be a tiny bit of wordsmithing to still allow.
It does, however, it still requires, as it stands now, it requires, uh, title changes, job description changes to come forward to council, uh, as the...
Not, we just did.
No.
No, the job descriptions and job titles just get notified.
Okay.
We just want you to know.
And I've already, you know, made it clear to council, you know, we've never, the city's never done that way in the past. Most cities that I've talked to and struck fingers, don't do it that way. I'm fine with that because, you know, this is, we've got so many council members, uh, still doing the ropes of wholesome responsibilities of council. Um, I don't have an issue with that. Um, I do have, uh, the same concerns that councilmember Dicky shared, but I will refrain from, um, restating those, um, omitted agenda bill until the next meeting. So can I?
So I just out of curiosity, can you think of an easy way to word that where it's basically the mayor would propose or the mayor would, um, recommend to council for approval? Does that make sense? I see that language a lot, would recommend to council for approval. So he would request, he would recommend it to the council for approval? Just to make sure that your decision-making is internally closer. It's just a wordsmithing, just to address, um, and I don't know if that's helpful at all. It might not be helpful.
One question in the code language itself is how do you want to thumbs up or thumbs down it? I mean, in the whereas it says by resolution, in the code, it doesn't say by resolution. So, um, and I don't think it needs to be a resolution. I think you could.
Okay, so I think you could.
So, um... I love editing on the fly. Am I just confusing things? No, it's just wordsmithing. So I think, um... I think we put a semi-colon after chief administrative officer and then it says my council will... Um, upon, upon recommendation.
Just for confirmation by?
Do you want to say for confirmation or upon recommendation or, um, upon approval by chief administrative officer?
I guess it depends on if council wants, how far council, like, in the process it goes because if the mayor is just making the recommendation and the council has to confirm it for it to be legit, then it would be basically like, um, it would be the mayor going forward for recommendation, not necessarily... Because when I think of confirmations, I think of like your library or cultural submission. You are confirming her appointment, which means she has already done the action, she's already appointed it, and you are confirming that. So it would be a recommendation for approval.
Decision.
For decision of council. It might not even be necessary. I apologize for a period there.
Let's close up really big so they see. And then say, um, I mean, um... The chief administrative officer shall recommend for confirmation.
For approval.
Or, yeah, or approval.
It would be decision, not approval.
Decision. Chief administrative officer shall recommend to council. And he's such, oh, I don't know. That may be backwards.
I agree with you.
I personally find it that the way is.
Because confirmation is defined, I, I wouldn't want to just add another clause in there. First of all, about approval, like confirmation is about that being, if the intent is to avoid, if, if the mayor says absolutely not, the idea being that for absolutely not, it's not even gonna reach the council's intention.
Right.
I don't think that's fully explained in the new language I'm thinking about, so I...
I'm lying with it. I just thought if there was an easy one thing, but there's not, so I'm fine.
Councilmember Rappel and councilmember McCannery.
Um, I think the important thing is that, again, job descriptions, mayor's doing them, it's notification. It's, it's no change of crossing any lines or anything. On the issue of reclassification, the, the mayor is evaluating that. And the mayor is determining when a reclassification is appropriate based on the criteria. And so she knows what, that is upfront to document and so we... And the reason why I hate reclassifications, we're not getting into the, the, the decision-making about what to come forward and the justification for that. What we're deciding is can we afford it? That's the issue. Because if we have reclassifications happening and it's out of line with the budget, you could end up in a situation where you don't have enough money just because of the way reclassifications go with steps and all that. So it's very important from a budget perspective to understand the rationale that the mayor has for a reclassification. And then it's our job to assess whether we have the funds, not just to fund it in that moment, but to sustain it. And so it is a collaborative effort. It's not, we're not getting in there making the proposal of the reclassification. That is something the mayor and her staff are bringing forward. We're looking at the money side of it.
Councilmember McCannery and number 10.
So I, I'm comfortable with it the way it is, however, we do have legal here and you had questions. So I, I'm okay with it like it is now, but also if we decided to wait until the next meeting out of respect for our councilmember Dicky, however, I would like to hear whatever answers or resolutions to the questions you have. So I don't know if you have them on, you know, on the top of your head that you could just ask now since we do have legal here.
Yes, um, so the way I'm reading it, it still feels to me like the burden is on us as council. And I just don't want to be the person responsible to make that sort of employee decision. I, I want to defer that back to the staff. So I understand about budgeting, but this doesn't feel like it's about budgeting and being responsible for money. This feels like a resolution that says, mayor can do X and achieve this. By the way, it doesn't matter because at the end of the day, council will decide, do you reclassify it? Do you get that authority? Whatever you're doing, that is the part I'm very uncomfortable with because that doesn't tell the story of budget. That tells a story more of a power shift in the current structure of our governance. Do you understand?
I understand.
Do you see, that's the way I'm seeing it. And so I want clarification. I do not want the liability, um, to deal with the fact that if there's disgruntled employees or something, or somebody feels it's unfair and that falls on me. I'm not the one who's in the organization to manage all these employees. So I don't feel, how can I make that decision?
Sure. And can, Ms. Rappel, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Um, my staff's interpretation of code as it currently exists is that reclassifications that have a negative impact to the budget must come through council for approval. Reclassifications that do not have an impact to the budget as of today do not come for council. So this fundamentally would change that, um, so all reclassifications would come through the council, even those without a budget impact.
Okay.
Um, that's my interpretation. That was previous, uh, staff discussion as well.
Okay, I mean, I think, I think that's fair. Um, so to answer the first question, the RCW allows the council by ordinance to effect any change to employment, um, so long as it follows the parameters of budget. So it's contradictory to the RCW. It also says that the mayor has essentially personnel CEO administrative powers. The, the council can't essentially trump the mayor when it comes to the budgeting for employment. I think that most reclassifications are going to follow in the first category. Now, if the mayor is saying that no reclassifications, um, if all reclassifications that do not impact the budget are not subject to council approval, um, that could be true, but the council is allowed to say whether or not it impacts the budget. That there, the council has a constitutional right to, um, essentially veto any decisions that would impact the budget. And so I, I suppose, I don't think this ordinance would be overbroad. It could be narrowly tailored, so it would also write a policy that says exactly what the mayor just said. Um, I don't think you're, I think you're getting very close to a very gray line, but I don't think this trends too far into the mayor's purview at this point. Um, and certainly well within the council's authority to do so. Now, we were saying more liability law and that's a completely different issue. Um, as we, as I've said, and I think it's been discussed in the council meetings for this to discuss, none of this has anything to do with rights under collective bargaining. I mean, it, it, the mayor could, by personnel decisions violate CBA, the council could. If you're talking about reclassification, you know, disapproving of a reclassification or approving a reclassification, violate the CBA, that can be true for whoever makes the decision. This ordinance is completely separate apart for contracted employee rights or collective bargaining rights. Um, and, and the city does have the potential to step in, no matter who's making that decision. Um, so this, this is not anything that would put more risk on the city unless, obviously, councilmember here says, I don't want to be involved in any of these decisions, I don't know anything about this stuff. Um, then I would probably advise it's not even time to change the ordinance. Um, but to the extent that the liability remains the same, I'm not all that concerned. Additionally, you do have the chief administrative officer making the recommendation to council, so hopefully they're going, I mean, the, the mayor is well-equipped to make that recommendation saying this reclass will not impact the CBA or this reclass could impact the CBA and here's why. Um, ideally, that's how this, this would work. I don't think the council should ever be in a position of being the only voice when it comes to management and employment decisions, reclassification decisions. I don't think that's how this is set up, but I appreciate your concerns.
Councilmember Letho.
Unfortunately, you weren't at the last meeting where we talked about the fact that there have been reclassifications that were not known and not analyzed on the financial side, um, by council members. And I'm, and I'm not questioning or trying to redo those, but it becomes really problematic if what you're trying to do financially is look at sustainability. So our job is not just to look at today or, or even this biennial. It's to look at our long-term exposure around, do we have enough employees? Um, are we prepared for a recession? Um, the research that was done within finance committee showed that, you know, in fact, in 2017, you may even remember this, where we had to go into fund balance to keep all the employees we have. So really, financial, long-term financial planning for the city, of which this is a part, what it does is it actually lets us protect our employees more. Because we don't have the resources, we don't know what our long-term liabilities are as positions are shifting and changing or reclassifying or whatever you want to say about them. We don't, we're not tracking that as a finance committee. Then we start to end up in a situation where we're really not that accountable to the taxpayers and we have, you know, a financial oversight responsibility that inadvertently, I want to stress that word, ends up compromised just because we don't have enough information as changes are going through. So one of the reasons I think this is so important right now is that, um, we are at a time where we, um, have had vacancies, um, in our finance department and everybody's working to get that resolved. But in the meantime, um, it's gonna take a while to get that long-term analysis really done and finance committee can't do that without current information and dialogue with the mayor about what she's thinking about in reclassifications. The mayor can come to us as a finance committee and say, hey, I'm looking at a reclassification here. Here's kind of what I'm thinking, um... But to have reclassifications happen and not have a venue through which we can evaluate the long-term financial impact really puts us at a disadvantage as a council. Um, the classifications that were changed, um, you know, we have no detailed financial information on. Um, and that isn't to be, that isn't to take us down a negative path, it's just a fact, we don't have it. And so we don't have a way to analyze the long view of how that's gonna roll with respect to step increases, with respect to future discussions with, um, collective bargaining. We don't have any, any of that in finance right now. Um, along with, you know, the need for financial reports. And there's just a growing list of things that we get further and further behind as committee. And this is one thing that can keep us more all in line.
Um, I would like to correct, there have not been reclassifications within departments. There have been promotions by department directors internally. Reclassification is taking a job position and changing that job position and changing those duties. These were promoted into job descriptions by the directors who existed previously. We have not reclassified positions with the exception of the community development director, which was done through the budget process last year, and there were no pay scale changes to that change of title for the client director to community development director, despite additional responsibility. So there have not been reclassifications, there have been promotions. And there is a big difference between that. Part of our challenge right now is our current code does not define what defines a reclassification or promotion. In my 15 years of government experience, a promotion is a promotion, a reclass is a complete change of position title. And if you have any feedback, Ms. Rappel, I would, if you have any contrary feedback, I'd love to hear it. That's my experience and all of the legal advice I've received over the years.
I absolutely think section 4.08 could use some more definitions. I think the whole section could use a review, but no.
Councilmember Iyer and councilmember Ho.
I think we're directionally opposed on this issue. And I don't know how productive the ongoing conversation is. I will say that generally, promotion, and I almost don't even want to get into this, but I think for organizations, there's gonna be a perception about promotions for positions that weren't in the budget that existed at some point in time in history that apparently we have changed another part of the code to address that. Because in my 10 years of government experience, you don't get promoted into a job that was there at some point and is no longer there, hasn't been funded, and that, it's another type of reclassification as far as I'm concerned. But I, 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 in, out of respect for councilmember, uh, Reddington, I, I, I don't wanna, I think we should just recognize our difference of opinion and, um, and try to, try to move on. I feel, whereas, I feel comfortable with the language changes and, and, and now I feel like we need to address the relatively, uh, promptly in the first quarter address the definition of promotions. But I, I want to do that in a curt, um, respected, respectable, uh, way and productivity and non-destructive kind of conversation. And that's just my hope. Um, and hopefully we could just, uh, I, I would like to follow that and take the changes in January, uh, first January meeting and, um, and allow councilmember Dicky to ask additional questions if she would like to, or councilmembers or legal council and, and then, and then make out of that, that meeting.
Councilmember Ho, I'd like to see some additional revision of the code before we approve this.
I'd like to see some additional revision in the code before we approve this. I think we need to add promotions if that's something new that, if there's other loopholes in this code, we need to add it as well. We also maybe want to consider only allowing reclassifications and promotions during the budget process, which is what other cities do. So those are some changes I would like to see.
Again, I think this is highlighting the need to kind of move on and have additional discussion. This isn't, I don't think this is something that's going to be resolved at the next council meeting. Councilmember Ira.
I, I think the point of reclassification is a finite thing that we can solve January first. I think the definition of promotion does need to be drilled down into it because if there's no composition that has been vacated and it wasn't in the budget, then no, we shouldn't have to bring that to council to put, to interview a person and put them in that position and subsequently you can put whoever you want in the next vacancy that's created by that position. If there are positions, I, so just, I think we should, we should just chip off this piece, move on and try to chip off another piece at a later date of clarification. That would be my respectful way.
Anyone else? If seen none, then we will move this to the January 7th agenda. And with no further business on the agenda, you are adjourned.